I'd like to call the November six, twenty twenty five Planning and Commission meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation given by Mr. Russell Wilder and the pledge given by Mr. Jamie Lester.
I would bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for another beautiful day in this community. We want to thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon Columbia County and this great country of ours. Oh, we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance this evening, behave civilly and do the best we can to treat these matters professionally. Oh, we ask that you look over all of our first responders, our sheriff's office and the deputies for all they do for us and the risks they sometimes put themselves in for us. And also, we ask that you give all of us that have taken time out of this week to come to this meeting a safe journey home from this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I just need to...
Hello. I say so. Well, thank you. On that. God is able to repeat for all of us.
We do have a full quorum tonight, all planning and zoning commissioners and attendants. Like to get approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, October sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October sixteenth meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I'd like to get approval of the agenda for this evening.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Mixon to obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Getting into the debate agenda, new business, final plat, H one, A one, Abundance Point, Phase Two. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Phase Two of Abundance Point off Abundance Way. It is for an additional seven lots to be plotted in this subdivision. This shows the location, off Camper Club Road. It is currently zoned R four recreational residential. In the final plat, add seven additional residential lots to this development with a minimum lot size of point nine eight acres and an average lot size of one point six seven acres. And this does meet the requirements of the R four zoning district. Setbacks are a minimum of fifty-five feet from the center line of the road and ten feet from the side and rear property lines. And there is two point nine nine acres of open space in this development. There is no public infrastructure for this project. Everything will be on wells and septic systems and the road will be private. Access to this site is from Camper Club Road, which is in the process of being developed to county standards. The remainder of the road construction is bonded to allow approval of the final plat at this time, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, this is not a public hearing. Can I get a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Abundance Point.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Massage operators license, H one B one, Luxo Esthetics Studio LLC. Will?
There are sheriff's requests for massage operators licenses. We've got two of them this evening. First one is Luxo Esthetics Studio LLC, applicant is Street of Rose here, two oh five Seventy One Cox Road, Suite A, also offering mobile massage services. Also, they have Revive Massage and Bodywork LLC, applicants are Jenny Goodell and Andrea Morris, two oh five New Petersburg Drive, Suite D. All these applicants meet the requirements of ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
Good. Thank you, Will. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval for massage operator license, operators license for Luxo.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Just to make sure, is it just for the one?
They're red for both.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Take a separate motion for the second one.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for the first. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator license for Revive Massage and Bodywork LLC at two oh five New Petersburg Drive, Suite D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Public hearing point of the agenda, temporary use authorization, H one C one, sixty-nine fifty-six Moon Town Drive East. Dylan?
Uh, yes, sir. This is an application for temporary use. This shows the location of the parcel. Aerial photo, a little bit up. Uh, the zoning for this parcel and all surrounding parcels are, is RA. Uh, and this is a breakdown of the site as it generally is currently. The primary residence of the property was completed a little bit earlier this year. Um, during the construction of that process, the property owner, who is son of the current applicant, completed the construction of that primary residence while making use of a temporary use authorization for the existing single wide shown here. Um, now, uh, the property owner's parents are seeking to make use of a separate temporary use authorization as they look to complete the construction of an ancillary dwelling on the site. Well, um, obviously, that being the case, they're familiar with this process and they complied with the first application amongst the family members. Now separately, we process without issue. Uh, these are the floor plans for the ancillary dwelling that they're proposing. Separately, there was a variance that they applied for to eighteen hundred square foot maximum dwelling on a property. Uh, we're not here to review that tonight. That already received. They're good to move forward with these plans. Deciding whether or not they are able to continue making use of the single wide until they complete the construction. That is recommended.
Thank you, Dylan. Would the owner, Wayne Lukin, or applicant Christine and William Lukin would like to come forward and add anything? Anyone here in the audience would like to speak against this? Can I get a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization.
A second.
I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, H one C two, minor S, S one revision on DeSoto Drive. Dana?
Yes, sir. This is a minor revision to the S one special zoning, a location at thirty-nine forty DeSoto Drive on two point four three acres. Existing use is a church, and the request is to add a storage building to the rear of the property. Here is the location on the south side of DeSoto Drive. This is the zoning map, shows the S one, which is for the church. Surrounding is our three single family residential, and the red, you can see there is general commercial. It's a close-up of the area where you can see the existing buildings and a plat of the property. This is a street view. And in nineteen ninety-six, the S one zoning was approved for the church that was there existing, and they wanted to rebuild and, uh, into a new sanctuary that was eighty-two hundred square feet, and that was approved, and that was the plan from then. The current request is a storage building of fifteen hundred square feet. It's located towards the back of the property and meets the twenty feet setbacks that was part of the original plan. And it will be used just for storage related to the church. And this is the photo of the rear view. And elevations of the proposed building, and staff is recommending approval.
Would the owner or applicant would like to come forward and add anything to this? Any other member would like to speak against this? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file R Z twenty-five dash eleven dash zero one, minor S one revision for a storage building at thirty-nine forty DeSoto Drive.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, H one C three, R Z two-five dash one-one dash O two major PUD at Windmill Parkway. Dylan?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is an application for a major revision, the planned unit development at, uh, nine seven five Windmill Parkway. This shows the location of the parcel, again, within the Windmill Plantation subdivision. Uh, it's within a later section of that subdivision that is on planned unit. And this is a close-up of the property. Um, the issues that we're dealing with with this application are the gazebo that you see in the southernmost corner of the property, um, as well as, uh, the pool in the backyard. Um, this shows, uh, an existing site survey for the property. It shows that that gazebo was constructed, uh, a little over two and a half feet from the lot. Um, at its size, it is subject to five-foot setbacks, so it is, uh, violating that setback. Additionally, um, uh, due to an oversight, typically residential lots have a ten-foot rear setback. Um, back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, the property owner applied for a permit to construct a pool, unbeknownst to them and as well to inspectors on the county side. There's actually, uh, a typical, um, twenty-foot rear setback. So the pool that you saw in the backyard is actually technically with a setback on this property as well. Um, both of those issues are what we're applying for revisions. Um, generally with setback reductions, what we're looking at is adverse impact on neighbors or surrounding property. Um, when this issue was kind of found out, uh, we counseled the, uh, property owners to, uh, get with their HOA and see if they get approval at that level, uh, keep the structure. Um, they have then set about work to landscape it quite well. This is shown in these photos here. Um, this area of the property is generally pretty well landscaped and, uh, therefore that kind of mitigates a lot of the concerns with any kind of adverse visual impact on the surrounding neighbors. Um, through that HOA review process... Through that HOA review process, they did receive approval as well as several tendered letters of support from their neighbors. The only outstanding issue at this point with the pool's presence or the gazebo's presence is that the gazebo reaches into a drainage and utility easement along that side lot line. So there is a condition of approval that we are recommending that an easement encroachment be filed. The applicant is familiar with that process because their pool deck already reaches into a drainage and utility easement. They filed that easement encroachment agreement previously, so they're familiar with that process. They actually filed this subject easement in congruence with this application. So that is already in process and in the process of being solved. Beyond that, the only other condition that we're proposing is that the reduction of the already very small 5-foot side setback only apply to the gazebo as it exists currently. That way, 5-foot or 10-foot side setback that would apply to other structures in the future will remain intact. The only exception at the moment that we're seeking to recommend approval for, the existing gazebo.
Thank you, Dylan. Would the owner and applicant Gabriella would like to come forward and add anything to what Dylan's narrative? Any other member here would like to speak against this? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file RZ25-11-02 major PUD revision to reduce the side and rear 975 Hill Parkway.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, H1C4, RZ25-11-03 rezoning from RA to S1. Will?
Senator Sheriff's, this is a request for rezoning at 5385 Washington Road, about 12 and 1/2 acres from RA to S1 for a proposed outdoor vehicle storage yard. This location of the property, again, just down from the intersection of Tubman and Washington Road, doesn't involve all three of those properties there. And again, most everything around it is zoned RA. We do have some S1 to the north, a zoned S1 for a church, and then some seats to further at Washington Road. Again, it shows the aerial view of the site and the plat of the property and the site itself and the overall concept plans. What we're looking at tonight is an outdoor storage yard. Again, this is essentially a parking lot, end of the day, for storage of vehicles. Typically, we see these as actual self-storage buildings with this being kind of secondary. This is kind of the second one we've seen in the last six months where it's only a storage yard itself. Again, it's kind of the bare minimum to use a property realistically. They've done a little bit different way of going about this. Usually, the paving material is the biggest question of these. Typically, asphalt is what we want to see, gravel is not. However, they have kind of done an interesting way of kind of asking us for this, saying with the gravel, they'll increase their buffers to 50 feet on the front, 40 feet on the sides instead of 30 for the asphalt. So it's one of those, there's a bit of a trade-off here. Nothing with the lighting is within this request, however, we do have some conditions kind of talking about that. This is one of those things where this area is a rural neighborhood's character area. Those have things like neighborhoods within it, having things that are essentially heavy commercial or industrial uses. We realistically cannot recommend approval of something like that from a market standpoint. You could, there is an argument for it potentially. But this is an interesting way, an interesting project to consider. Go to the next slide. Okay. This shows the rural neighborhood character I was talking about. Overall, staff does not recommend approval of this request. There is some conditions on the next slide if you do propose going in that direction, again, requiring you to have asphalt or concrete on the property. The structural buffers being increased to 40 feet against RA and 10 feet against adjacent S1, and also lighting on the side will be shielded and directed away from adjacent properties. That's clear of staff recommendation.
Thank you, Will. Would the owner, LD and NLLC, or applicant LSD Development LLC would like to come forward and speak? Speak your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Bill Quarter, 842 Sparkleberry Road, Evans, with Blue Water Engineering. I'm not the owner or the applicant, but I'm here on their behalf. The applicant could not be here tonight. Just to clarify, the applicant has not yet owned the property. He's interested in purchasing the property for the purpose you see here. Can we go back to the zoning slide that shows the existing zoning? So, as you know, this is out generally in what we would call the Riverwood area, and development is expanding outside of the current node. There is some C2 commercial just on the other side of the intersection from this, and so at some point, there's probably going to be more commercial development in that area. I think the proposed use here is pretty innocuous, when you think of boat and RV storage. It's not going to be a lot of activity in and out. People are going to tend to come to the site, store their boat or RV and leave and not be there. So as Will mentioned, the applicant has offered some additional buffers. They would like to do gravel, really just for early-on cost savings so they can generate some revenue and pay it in the future. We do realize that that comes with some challenges in Columbia County. One thing that I don't think is in the narrative or on the plan, but they could also do some additional screening, the idea being that you wouldn't see this from the road from a gravel standpoint. You know, they haven't really thought through lighting, to be honest. That question came up, but if lighting were to be added, they want to be good neighbors. So, you know, a condition for a photometric plan and lighting shielding so that there's not any light pollution on adjoining properties would certainly be reasonable. Other than that, I think that pretty much covers it. I'm glad to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Mr. Quarter, the thing that occurs to me when I go by there, the line of traffic I'm typically in at this location, we're going 50, 55 miles an hour.
Right.
It's not really a bad blind spot. There is a decent amount of sight distance. I'm curious, is there any plans of a turn, a decel lane or anything like that to kind of mitigate me going 55 and all of a sudden a boat trailer in front of me is making a right-hand turn off Washington Road?
Right. So this is just a conceptual plan of the site for zoning. If the zoning is approved and the applicant purchases the property and goes forward, we would have to go through a full site plan. And one of the things that we would have to do from a traffic standpoint is look at that. I would think that a decel lane would certainly be required for that site.
Left turn as well?
Possibly, that depends on traffic. That would really be a call based on whatever the traffic reviewers would say. I think in this case, that would be DOT, correct, Will?
That's correct.
So we would have to have a DOT permit for the proposed entrance and most likely some form of a traffic study to determine if a left turn would be warranted.
Thank you.
The other possibility is they may limit it to right-in, right-out only with a decel lane, and there wouldn't be any left turns across Washington Road. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I play one on TV. I suspect that would be the condition that they would like to see right-in, right-out and would not want to see a left turn.
Yeah, because half the vehicles are recreational and they're going to be coming from the lake at some point after they leave the place.
Right.
You know what the distance is from the driveway to the top of hill there at Tubman Road?
I don't off the top of my head, but if we have any kind of a dimension on the plan that can get us in the ballpark.
Seems he's put the driveway between the two front plats.
Not that we would propose a drive this close, but I think, you know, minimum driveway spacing for county standards and DOT standards on lower traffic drives is like 150 feet. So I don't think that driveway spacing is going to be a huge concern, and sight distance, in addition to the traffic study, sight distance would have to be looked at, and it may be that that entrance that we've got shown on the plan moves further east than what we have. Again, this is just conceptual for the zoning purposes at this point.
We have any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member here would like to speak for this? Any member, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Marlena Bergeron, Will Creek-Cortin, Evans. Russ, that was a lovely prayer. Always good to see you again. I just have a quick question. You said you would prefer asphalt to gravel, is that correct?
That's correct.
So gravel, from a stormwater absorption perspective, would be more porous, better for the surrounding neighborhoods for runoff. What's the county's reason for suggesting asphalt instead?
So that has been the policy for a minute. There has been gravel that has been allowed in the past, but no longer that is the case.
Is it aesthetics or?
Yeah, we could say that.
Okay, I was just curious. Is there a way to revisit that policy?
Love to.
Okay. I'll give you a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience would like to come forward and speak? State your name and address for the record.
My name is Boris Sedaw, and we live off of Bonaventure Way. And that intersection, North Tubman and Washington, gives me the willies all the time. People coming up from going westbound towards the lake, there is kind of a blind spot, and people do not go 45 or 55. They go very fast. And I drive that every morning to Fort Gordon and come back, and it's really, there's a lot of traffic there. So I'm thinking, now how the heck are you going to get the boats and all of that to turn right and then to come and... It's almost like they need a traffic light at that North Tub in Washington. But that's all I got to say. And they got to do something with the lights, because I used to live off of, I-20 was my backyard, and they had those shields. They really don't do much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member here tonight would like to speak for or against? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove file RZ25-11-03 rezoning from RA to S1 for the property located at 5385 Washington Road.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the disapproval, raise your right hand. That's disapproved. Next item is H1D, text amendments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just real quick, if I could, just want to clarify a couple things for the board as well as the folks that are here tonight. The Board of Commissioners asked staff to go ahead and draft up a new zoning district specifically for data centers, and that's what you'll have here before you in just a moment. As a new district in the Code of Ordinances, it would establish the opportunity for properties to be rezoned to this development or this data center district should it be approved by the Board of Commissioners. So just because this is before you tonight does not automatically zone any properties here in the county to this district. Again, should it be approved by the Board of Commissioners when they get this. So there is no map changes to this, to the county at this time. And again, any rezonings, should the text amendment be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it would still, any property that wishes to be rezoned to this new district would have to go through the rezoning process, which is a public hearing through the planning commission and then obviously through the Board of Commissioners. Just as a clarification on this particular request, because it is a text amendment, the Board of Commissioners would read it two times, so there would be two chances to hear that. It would be first and second reading.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. So H1D1, PA25-11-01, Chapter 90 zoning, Article 3, Commercial, Industrial, Professional, Special, Plan Unit Development and Plan Development Districts. Will, you have this.
I do. It's been fun.
There you go. You have it.
So we'll start basically at the top of, here is what we're talking about, and then we'll kind of work through this. All this stuff works in conjunction with each other. So it's one that normally you get text amendments that can have multiple pieces to them, where you get pass this one and not pass this one. It's pass the entirety of this for this end of work. It's one of those that has lots of moving parts to it in some respects, but it is overall a little more simple than you think. So we'll start with the establishment of Section 9S-101, DC Data Center District. Normally, your zoning classifications have, like your typical zoning classification, let's say C2, would have a list of uses. There's, you know, 25 uses that could go in C2. What we're doing here is that DC has basically four, if we're counting all of them. You have the actual, you have data centers, R&amp;D facilities, and then two different utility classifications. And technically, there's a fifth one with a cell tower as a conditional use. So what this does establishes, you know, here's what you can do here with 101, very broad, very, it's not really specific, and also says, here's where you go to find out the rest of the rules that are with this. One of the things that we did with this district is that 9S-147 is our use provisions piece of the ordinance. That has things that are in addition to with your normal uses. With this one, though, we added things like the accessory uses are actually in there, buffers are in there. We did this a little different way because we didn't really want to go and change whole sections of the ordinance. We realized, okay, let's put things in 147 that are very specific. And that's kind of how we did it. It looks a little different, though, having accessory uses in there. We'll get into 147 in it, but it's a little different way of going about it. So we'll move on to 9S-97, and we're basically going from the creation of it, then the small changes that we made, and then the big ones, 147. 9S-97 allowed uses, we added DC to the table and also the allowed uses. That's straightforward with that change there. Again, it establishes that those districts, it does say on the ordinance, if you look at it, there's many empty boxes. That means you can't do that in DC. And this is a zoning classification that has a handful of uses and that is it. It does not allow things, like you can't have a store there, that kind of thing. So moving on to Section 9S-98 lists a lot of structural requirements. So any zoning classification, you have to have a minimum lot size. So the reason, kind of, well, let me back up. So kind of where we took inspiration for the lot sizes and all the setbacks and all that, we're from M2. That's our general industrial, that is our most intense zoning classification that's not S1 or PUD or something. That's kind of where we started with that. So the two-acre minimum lot size on there, that is, there is a way to do a data center on two acres, but you have to be surrounded by many of the things. You can't just go and have a two-acre parcel out in the middle of nowhere and make it work. See why in a moment we start talking about buffers. But again, the minimum lot size of two acres, that allows you to have, let's think about the current one that has been gone through zoning. That's 2,000 acres of land, has multiple buildings on it. If I want to subdivide out a building and sell that building, I need to have a lot size I can use. That's what this does. It gives you a minimum lot size of two acres. Now, the other thing that also does, it has a, there's some asterisks in there that say if you have things like a pond, a stormwater pond, your utilities, again, these are going to have substations on them, those don't have to abide by the two-acre minimum. It's one of those, they could be all kinds of sizes, to be honest. And that's fairly typical, though. We don't have requirements for your pond in your neighborhood. So it's one that we have, those are kind of carved out. The other thing, too, your building setbacks, typically, we allow you to reduce your building setback down to three feet, or adjacent to, like C2 to C2, that kind of thing. We're doing the same thing here, we're next to M2, that are M2 and also C3, those are those very more intense zoning classifications. Again, it kind of gives us, there's different kind of ways to approach that, but it gives you that ability. Also, within your large campus, have different parcels that are side-by-side, you have that three-foot setback. That's the other thing we're thinking of here as well. Your side and rear building setbacks are 40 feet. Those are going to get overridden by a buffer if you were, let's say, adjacent to a residential property. Those are there just for certain situations if you need it. Maximum building height, again, normally it's 55 feet. We added 20 feet onto that because we've seen multiple requests for more than 55 feet on commercial properties. They've been okay. Bumped it up to 75 just to kind of take out some extra work potentially. So in terms of buffering, again, we're talking about buffering in 147. All we did with that is we added DC to the list, to the table. Again, nothing is buffering against DC. DC is basically your most intense classification. We had to add it to the table. You know, okay, if I'm putting a neighborhood next to it, what do I got to do for a buffer? You don't have to do anything. So that's what we did there. All right. 147 use provisions, this is kind of the meat of the whole thing. So what this does, it establishes basically the additional requirements. Here are the things, if you come and apply for this, here's all the stuff that you have to abide by to get your zoning, to develop these pieces of property. It basically gives you, here's your rulebook for all of this. So again, you establish it with the definitions of it, and we have definitions of data center, of R&amp;D facilities, of a substation, fairly typical for most of our use provisions. Then we do go into accessory uses. These are a little bit different. We have things like daycares on there. One of the things that we found is that these are twenty-four hour operations. Sometimes the folks who work there might need a daycare, might need a cafeteria, might need a gym, that kind of thing. Now, the specific there is that that is only for the people that work there. It's not open to the public. So it's one of those, it gives them the ability and the flexibility to have these things. Again, a little different way of going about it, having accessory uses built in 9S-147. Also have solar energy systems. You can put those on top or on the ground. Those are an accessory use. Normally, those require rezoning. This lets you put them on top of the roof if you want to, or out on the site itself. There are some buffering requirements for that. But this is a listed accessory use with this classification. So, with sound is another thing that is a potential issue. We have a seventy decibel sound at the property line for this. We also require you to do a sound study for these. When you submit for your zoning, you're going to give us a sound study that says, here's what this is right now. Is it less than seventy? Great. Sounds, that sounds wonderful. You now have less things to do realistically for your project. Now, that doesn't end at that point. If you go out there, you build your project, and then you come to get your CO, it's, you have to go do another sound study, turn all your stuff on, and see how loud you actually are. One of those that you're going to have to show that you've kept it below seventy for your project. And that's, again, before CO is issued on a building. Now, talking to the guys that build these things, they're not really concerned about it, but at the same time, it's one of those, it gives an extra layer of, we're going to be checking on this as it is constructed. Next is generators. We've actually made a change to the generator section. This has been one that we've gone back and forth with internally, externally. Can you go to the next slide, please? Currently, what we have on there is, generator testing is only allowed between hours of nine and five, for no more than two hours daily on weekdays only, and it'll occur only on federal holidays. Talking about that back and forth internally, we were very concerned about how to enforce that. It's one that becomes an enforcement question for us. So what we've done, again, you do have, they have to locate away from adjacent property, look at interior of a site, can't even go within a buffer or building setback. Again, these are going to be far away from things. We'll, as we'll see with the buffers. The revision that we proposed, I'll for y'all to consider this evening, to the next slide. So that is, you still have the locate away from adjacent property, but this has been simplified quite a bit. You still have, except for generator testing, it's limited to backup use. Again, still interior of the site and all that, testing has minimized noise, vibration, et cetera. But there is no, you can only test during these hours or during these days, that sort of thing. So that is the big change that we've made with generators currently. So moving on to the rest of this, wells and lighting on the site is discussed. We've made it very clear, you're going to have wells on the site itself. There's supposed to be on county water. Lighting, again, is going to require you to shield and direct it away from adjacent property, adjacent residential or agricultural property. And also give us a photometric lighting plan at site plan review stage. Fencing is a little bit higher than normal. Usually, we're looking at eight feet with two feet on top of that of wire or what have you. Maximum twelve feet in this case. But, you know, there is no razor wire allowed on top of it. But again, security is important to these, so it's one of those that, allowing a little extra in this situation. All right, buffers. This is where they get a little interesting. So with the previous request for the S1, we had a five-hundred-foot buffer around the entire site. So currently, we have a minimum of a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. Now, along the interstate, it's going to be reduced, and if you're adjacent to DC, M1 or M2, or plan districts that have that, you don't have to have a buffer. Now, you're probably asking a question, how about residential? Well, I guess double, five-hundred feet at that point, it's residential uses. We're doing a five-hundred feet for residential, and then two-fifty. This is all, this is on all sides of the property, we're talking about property lines and roads. Now, there are sites that could, or potentially could have less than that. They might work from a context standpoint. But we did have the ability to reduce that in half, down to two-fifty against residential, and one-twenty-five against other properties. And that requires you to, the BURMs, it requires you to give us a study, saying, here is how this is not visible to adjacent properties. But there is the ability to do that. Again, BURMs can dequat a lot to screen uses from other adjacent uses. There is a way to do that. Regarding parking, no established maximum or minimums. Again, these are huge buildings that, if you were to apply our code, which is based on square footage, you would have way too much parking. This allows us the ability to say, let's talk about how many people you actually have working here, tailor it to that. Mechanical equipment, hard to be screened, whether it's roof or ground mounted. Again, that's fairly common for the county already. Also, solar energy systems, again, as an accessory use, they have to be screened on whether on a roof or on the ground. A minimum of a twenty-foot structural buffer is on the ground for adjacent properties. In terms of landscaping, we're probably, we're going to treat this like we've treated the Amazon site. Again, large site. If you were to put the requirements of the ordinance as it stands, have quite a lot of landscaping when you didn't really need it. So we're going to be looking at basely area on that, that has worked out quite well with Amazon. It has saved large areas of the site and not had, not had those removed, but also allowed there to be enough landscaping internally to function, but not be excessive as well. Last, not last, but we also have the substations. If they're on the site, they require them to be screened. Again, that is, that's basically the ground mounted side of that. You can't screen stuff up in the air on a substation. Also, it's very clear in the ordinance that any upgrades required are going to be the responsibility of the applicant, not Columbia County. And then we also have two sections that are kind of unique from what we've seen across the state. First is requiring the applicant to give us a letter from the utility provider that survives verification, they're in good standing with that provider. They're not just doing this on a whim, essentially. That is the idea of it, it is essentially a will-serv letter at the end of the day. Also have a cessation of operations section that defines if they are, if they don't operate for basically a year, that they'll remove everything and take this thing down to the ground. That is something that, in our discussions with folks that build these, has been a bit of a contentious subject, but it's one that we think is important to have within this ordinance. Overall, again, we did have the change to the generator section that we'd like y'all to consider this evening. But other than that, that's a program's approval. Any questions you have for me?
Do we have any questions? Is there any member of the audience would like to come forward and speak? State your name and address for the record.
Sure.
And you're given five minutes, please.
Marlena Bergeron, Will Creek-Court. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to speak. I'm a member of the Sierra Club, Georgia's Adopt a Stream, Georgia Native Plant Society, and a certified master naturalist and master gardener. It is not naive or an exaggeration to say that many of us invested in Columbia County because of the natural beauty, the natural resources, biodiversity, recreational opportunities, and the intermittent preserved parcels of rural landscape. Yes, revenue streams are important. Our community's character, integrity, and spirit, and our actual streams, habitat, and watershed health are priceless and renewable if we keep them. The official position of the Sierra Club is that we are not opposed to data centers. What we want are good neighbors, just like you heard our friend Bill Corder say. Georgia is the fourth-largest and fastest-growing data center market because of cheap land, power, and water. We have almost a hundred data centers already online, and in 2024, state filings show twenty-five more data centers were submitted, including White Oak Tech Park. What we don't have yet are any state-level regulations. We don't have any success stories from across the nation of data centers voluntarily regulating themselves and offering upfront to pay for their own power and recycle the water they consume. I reviewed the text amendments, and I'm here to ask that you pass a more robust local ordinance. We don't want to be in a race to the bottom to degrade our environment. We want you, our appointed officials, who are chosen by our elected officials, to represent us on good faith so we can focus on our families and lives as we strive to contribute in meaningful ways to the county. We want you to value community over computers. We know data centers are coming, but we can ask them to be good neighbors before they set up shop. There are success stories of citizens uniting to pass either moratoriums or to implement guardrails to help govern data centers and crypto mining centers. Cities like LaGrange, Georgia, and the Project Pegasus. Counties like Monroe and DeKalb, who decided protecting people's livelihoods and homesteads with mandatory ordinance was a bigger priority than a booming data center. We need partnerships and objective assessments of risks and rewards. Constituents don't appreciate anyone attempting to force this project through with little public input or notice. We don't appreciate it when folks sincerely voice their concerns, their own research, or politely point out miscalculations, because no one is infallible. We're all learning together as this moves at breakneck speeds. But instead of incorporating and collaborating their work, some have been dismissed, or bullied, or accused of spreading misinformation. The effort to promote public meetings did not allow enough time to notify residents, and no one can read that font on your signs going forty-five to fifty miles per hour. So what we have here is a failure to communicate. This isn't the first time. But this was the first proposed data center, and now you've started the project, so now we're figuring out the rules. To quote a resident who spoke on Tuesday night's Board of Commissioners meeting, "This ain't no Parker's Kitchen." And now that I'm more informed, I find it a little insulting that a member of the Development Authority stated that geese flying overhead were louder than the data center noise pollution. Well, many of us love sounds from nature. Again, that's why we live here. Whereas mechanical sounds that hum twenty-four hours are not only annoying, they can be hazardous to physical and mental health. I appreciate the seventy decibels, as long as that works with the neighboring residents. There you go. In the ordinance, there is a minimum two-hundred-and-fifty wide natural buffer. Will, I appreciate you filling in, but no language is in there currently? About a five-hundred-foot buffer, which is what we would like enforced. Power supply should be paid for by the data center, not passed on to consumers, as it has been in other projects. Closed-loop cooling systems, because the water we have is all we're ever going to get. It must be used and recycled responsibly, especially if we clear out all those shade-producing trees who keep water at ground level. Data centers should not get priority for power restoration over households in the event of a mass outage. They are not the same as hospitals. And as a Georgia Adopt a Stream volunteer, I hope we'll have a point of contact, either with you or with the data center, if we notice our numbers changing when we test Cayokey Creek, that if the data spikes, then we'll have someone to go to to let them know our concerns. We would like Columbia County landscape architect to work with conservation groups like the Georgia Native Plant Society on the front and back end to allow for plant and tree rescues, preservation when possible, and after construction for restoration using only native plants whenever possible. Category 1 invasive plants should not be used, since they will spread into non-natives, they will spread more easily into what's left of our green spaces. Hurricane Helene took out a third of our old growth canopy. Calling a data center white oak is not the same as preserving and planting white oaks. We deserve to be in the room, and nearby residents deserve a seat at the table. We will stick our necks out for each other. We will figure this out together, course correcting along the way as our understanding evolves. We would like transparent dialogue, partnerships, and robust ordinances that put people first, not computers. We would like to welcome data centers who want to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Luis Rodriguez. I live in Evans at Windmill Plantation. Just have a couple of questions. I'm not here to oppose the project or anything, but I'm very curious. How much power does this facility require?
There's no facility proposed.
Take your pardon?
There is no facility proposed to give you an answer.
This is simply a text amendment tonight to consider whether or not to have a standalone zoning district for data centers moving forward. No project attached to this language that's here tonight. Now, there may be something down the road should the commission decide to approve it, but this, there's no project attached to this specific language here.
Oh, well, then I stand corrected, because I thought I had read that it required one thousand megawatts of electricity. And if that's the case, that would be enough power to service nearly one million residents. How, if that's the case, how would that affect our capacity and our reliability within our system? Question number one, hypothetical. Question number two would be, a plant of that size, is a one thousand megawatts, is equivalent to a large power plant, whether it be fossil fuel or nuclear, it doesn't matter. It's a very large facility, which requires an enormous amount of water for the condenses to condense the steam back to water after they've done their work with the turbines. Where's that water, where does it come from, and how does that affect our water supply? Those are my two questions. And if you decide to move forward, I would assume that this requires an environmental impact statement, which would be, I would think, in the state of Georgia. I don't know, I'm from New York. But that would be the normal process. And then it would be, there's a public review period for comments. And so there's still a lot of work to be done. Not a done deal, I guess, right? Thank you.
This is an ordinance.
Again, I'd like to, I'd like to say, this is just a text amendment. It is a creation of an ordinance specific to data centers. That's all this is, is a text amendment to the creation. If there's anyone else here would like to come forward and speak, state your name and address for the record.
Allen Wyatt, 2189 Morris Callaway Road in Apling. I'm going to be a neighbor to a data center that's planned. So we had a little bit of discussion about noise. Yes, before we get there, though, I have to take umbrage. Mr. Butler said, introduced it, and he said, Will, I think you've got this one. I said, yeah, it's been a lot of fun. It ain't fun for me. Ain't none of this. It's fun for me. I am retired. I've been retired a long time. I was living my retirement dream, and this messed it up big time. You guys may be having fun putting this together, but it's no fun challenging it for me. Hey, guys, understand that. Noise limit, seventy decibels, where did that come from? Let me explain where it came from. That is the hearing protection limit, so that you don't get hearing damage. I will measure, every night I've been measuring the sound, and the morning, and the afternoon, and we're averaging right now on my property thirty-five decibels at the property line. Okay, seventy is, seventy decibels is three thousand times greater than thirty-five decibel. So understand, when you say seventy-five, seventy decibels, that is nowhere near close and nowhere near good enough. Secondly, on the generator testing, okay, does the seventy decibels include the generator testing?
Oh, yes, it does.
Thank you. And then on enforcement, you mentioned that you were going to test it before they start the plant up and occupy? But after that, how about testing after that? Any standards for that?
They're always going to have the requirement for the seventy decibels. It's always there.
No, I'm talking about testing, because we can test and occupy, and then all hell breaks loose later. So what are we going to do to ensure that the seventy or lower, because it should be lower? What I'm suggesting is you should plan for the residents that live on Morris Callaway Road for no noise increase as a result of a data center a few thousand feet away. That's what we're asking. I don't care about a seventy-decibel limit at some point in their, on their property. What I care about is what I can hear from my property. It should be no louder than it is today. That should be the standard, surely, for a residential area. That should be the standard. Because remember, we moved out to Apling at peace and quiet. That's why we moved there. That was the, one of the predominant features of being able to move there. Does it cover construction noise?
That's not noted in there. Now, you still have the requirements for the noise ordinance itself, which is not that strong, we blunted about it. So that's still there, so.
But it, but, sorry, this doesn't cover construction noise?
Still have the noise ordinance, which does cover construction noise.
And what, what is that, what is the noise ordinance for construction?
Basically, if it's too loud and you get a couple people to agree to it, then it's loud.
So, so are you, are you folks aware that the Development Authority have already stated that this is a fifteen-to-twenty-year construction project? Are you aware of that? So for fifteen to twenty years, we're going to have construction noise coming from the site that is going to be only if we complain about it. Ordinance. That, gentlemen, ladies, is ridiculous. Next thing about noise, okay? Usually, in this part of the world... Usually in this part of the world, sometime around the morning, sometime around the evening, there's a temperature inversion. What happens then? Even today, we can hear I-20 on Morris Callaway Road. It's a mile, one-point-five miles away. But because of temperature inversions and the sound bouncing off the atmosphere, we can hear traffic on I-20. I've measured it, it bumps the thirty-five up to about fifty-five, fifty-six on average when we get that temperature inversion. Okay, you remove all the trees that are gonna be removed, data center that's coming to White Oak Park as an example, that noise is gonna be propagated even more than it is today. And it will probably exceed that seventy, because traffic noise off of I-20 is very low. So it should also, any ordinance should consider highway traffic noise propagation as a result of the trees being removed to put in the data center. That just makes common sense. On the light pollution, while light, lighting must be full cut off and directed away from the residential properties, why are there no specific foot candle limits at property lines and requirements for dark-skies compliant fixtures to prevent sky glow in areas currently where there's no artificial light, which is basically the entire White Oak Park, except for the northern, southern part of it around the Amazon complex? That's what we should be looking for. Is that my limit?
That's your limit, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Vin Muller, I live on Pecan Road in Aplin. Alan and I were at a meeting with Commissioners Couch and Caraway about two months ago where we discussed some of these things, and it was not in the forums, so there are no recordings to stating. But Commissioner Caraway told us at that meeting that the data center that is proposed not really a done deal yet, so we're told, would follow international dark-skies standards for all lighting, would be no greater than seventy decibels at the building envelope, not the property line. So I feel for Alan, when he has a thirty-four to thirty-five decibel ambient sound rating at his home, and you're proposing to make it, let it be seventy, that's tremendous. Low-frequency noise is blasted near impossible to stop. That's what gives you headaches. They will have to deal with that. They're right next to it. I appreciate the clarification that this does not require any changes to any current zoning, but I ask, what will be done for the two-thousand-acre White Oak Technical Park property? It was pushed through as an S1 quickly, with no public comment, no public input. I was the only mother, one other gentleman spoke at that meeting, to question it, and Will clarified the water value for me. But that, we have no legal grounds to hold them to any of this, unless EDAC and the Board of Commissioners and you, working in concert, as was done to get that S1 zoning, run this back through and make that property a DC. There is no other way that you have anything to hold them to. The contract with Trammell Crow says that they have all mineral, land, and water rights for that property. That allows them to build wells. You can't do a damn thing about it. It's not a county permit, it is a Georgia State EPD permit. It's not your business, and they'll tell you that. Will, I appreciate the work you put into this. I know it was a lot of work, and I recognize, although Alan took it a little differently, you were being facetious about it being fun. The Section ninety, ninety-eight, List of Lot and Structures, says that the minimum setback for a building face in Section ninety-eight is one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, but the building buffer is five-hundred feet, so does that mean that the face of the building is one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet further to the interior?
A buffer always overrides a setback.
Okay.
More restrictive.
I just, I don't deal with these all the time, I need to clarify. I have to also, on the sound, add to what Alan was saying. When will that sound be measured? As he was saying, you have temperature inversions, you also have seasonal changes. When the vegetation comes off of the net, appreciate, and the air is cold, that sound is gonna go flying through there like you wouldn't believe. There won't be anything you can do. So if you're gonna plan on taking your CO test measurements on a February morning where it's thirty degrees out, I'm okay with that. Otherwise, it's baloney. There are no references anywhere in this proposal for stormwater runoff or wastewater control. Those are gonna be two critical things. When this area is stripped of all of the trees and the grasses, and there are roadways and gravel lots and huge building expanses of roof, there's gonna be a lot of water flowing down those creeks. It's gonna wipe those creeks out, it's going to wreak havoc in the Windmill Plantation area, as you just saw with Helene. The, the generators, the, the power generation versus substation is something I am concerned about. Georgia Power doesn't have the power to support this thing at one-point-two gigawatts going forward. They're gonna build. Where are they gonna put it? They're buying up property all around this wonderful thing that you guys have proposed on us, and I, I'm saying you guys, because unfortunately, you're all painted with the same brush, being part of this county move. Will, will they have power generation required to meet a seventy-decibel standard? Or will that pour out like crazy? When the generators are in use, will they be allowed to call a Georgia Power curtailment an emergency or a backup plan? They then kick on all the generators on the site?
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your, state your, state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dewey Carey, 3118 Dozier Road, Aplin, Georgia. And I've been living on that road forty-seven years. My wife, sixty-seven years. We love Columbia County. We always have. We think we're a gold standard all the way around. For the most part, we have done the right thing for the communities. All we want in Aplin is for this body to understand, and the commissioners to understand, we want things that complement our community, not harm our community. I was on the first growth management plan ever written for Columbia County. It's the foundation of the vision of the community, of people like me, business people, teachers, board members. And our plan was totally ignored for this purpose. I can't understand it, because we've been going by this plan, we've been refurbishing the plan. Scott, I was at Grove Town, there were six of us, I brought three of them to continue to look at what's happening to Columbia County, to give our input. I appreciate that. But when you don't take our input seriously and ignore it, there's something wrong. You have been presented something that has totally been misrepresented. Now, I don't have time to speak on proposed policies, but the decibel reading could be no higher than fifty. That's comfortable sleeping, okay? I learn things, I study things, but then I don't appreciate a commission that I trusted that call out our members and me because I spoke against this monstrosity, and call us liars? And call us tacos or whatever it was? Come on, man! Give us some respect. I taught in Columbia County almost twenty years, my wife did too. My kids live here, my grandkids live here. And I'm, if you don't mind, I'm gonna send you proposed policies of different counties. One in, in Virginia is a thousand-foot setback from residential. And I, I expect that you do do the, the international building codes that you use, and you look at the water temperature when it's released, that it's not over forty-one degrees, so it doesn't go into our streams and kill our fish and all that. There's so many factors here. So when we have a, a policy or provisional thing that comes to you, it needs not to be generic. It needs to be custom-made to make sure that we're not breathing contaminated air, and my grandkids are breathing contaminated air at Harlem Middle School, and ten years later, they got cancer. This is serious stuff, people. We don't wanna be drinking glycol out of our water. We don't wanna have groundwater recharge submerged in other areas of county, because we, we're not even controlling it in some places in Columbia County now. Look at Atlanta and what's happened to Atlanta. I never wanted to be a Gwinnett County or Cobb County. That's what we're turning into. We care about this and not this. We should care about our people and our community. What fits our community? Read the 2035 Plan. Inform them what people are saying they want in this county, and the go-to place to move to has been Aplin, Winfield, Lea. I'm compassionate because I trusted the people that the commissioners put in charge. Mr. Cato, you do our side. Who's District Three?
Me.
You do, Mr. Holloway, you do our side. Both my families split. You know, I do appreciate all the hard work. Will's a great guy. We disagree about some things. Y'all do a wonderful job, but this thing has got to slow down. We have got to be sure. We don't need to be in a race to do something like this. It's a bubble, it's gonna explode. Thank you for your time. I'm gonna send you some policies across the nation. And the only question I ask Will and the commission, then I'll end, what makes this data center in Columbia County that's possibly coming to Columbia County, it seems like it's coming, what makes it different from the others that are wreaking havoc on other communities across the nation? People are upset all the way across the nation, but I'm being told I'm an idiot. You're a liar by my county commission with their rebuttal, and I don't appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Sharon Dantzler Campbell, 2338 Lawrence Street in Grove Town. Mr. Will, I appreciate the specifications that you gave on the buildings and, you know, the bells and whistles as far as the, the, like, daycare centers for those who will be working in. Good evening to this, to the, to the committee. And I think this is so new, and I'm, I'm new and I'm learning this, and I saw it on TV, and I said, "I gotta go." But this thing is so new for us, and we're still trying to learn it. And I'm sure we don't know all the ramifications. This is just starting, because there's gonna be years to come. We don't know what's coming. And, you know, and the different community, and the young lady, they've all said things far as the water. You know, there's water that's in, that's gonna be a part of this, there's going to be the electric, electronic waste and all the consumption. Did they make any, any plans for anything that may happen far as any waste that's gonna be, you know, have to get rid of down the road?
You're talking about, like, from the building, like the...
From, from the data center. That, the whole data center, anything that needs to be replaced or anything? Have they put provisions in place for all that?
So I mean, the thing to think about is that there are still state requirements in place for stormwater runoff, that sort of thing. There, we're not gonna be more specific than that in all likelihood.
Okay. And are there...
That's not part of this.
Yes, sir.
They're very clearly, let's call federal, state, and local requirements for environmental regulations.
Okay, and I'm sure there're gonna be all kind of emissions that are coming, but we're trying to see as a, as a community person, we wanna know who's benefiting from that? Who's gonna pay that high cost? Like the young lady said, who's gonna pay the high cost? Because even, we deal within the summertime, we can't even run our water and water our grass as we want to, so when the data pulls off, the data centers pull all this water, who's gonna suffer? Are they gonna be able to run the water, and we're still gonna be punished, but they can use all the water consumption that they want to? Because we do run into that in the summertime. And we do move in, I live in Columbia County, I just bought a beautiful home, and I moved to Columbia County for the reason that everybody else wants to live. We move out there, and it's a big veteran community, and we're talking about decibels, and we're talking about noise and lighting. You have a lot of veterans that are gonna go cuckoo because it's just like so much. They're gonna have to contend with the noise, they're gonna have to contend with the sound, they're gonna have to contend with the lights. And you know how a lot of the veterans, they suffer from PTSD. That's gonna affect that big community. And it's, and I don't know what's happening, and it's gonna bring, I don't know how the property's gonna go, because we move out there, and what if a, a data center comes into our area? And people see the beautiful homes, but they don't wanna live in that community. And we can't take for granted that most of Columbia County, like Evans and Martinez, you can drive through any neighborhood, and those neighborhoods, beautiful homes, and we can't take for granted that people, you know, we're, we're not gonna miss those few dollars each month from the water consumption, or the few dollars if our light bills get raised up. But when you go further out into the poorer communities, who's gonna speak for them? This is a bad time to even be talking about this with what's going on with our government. People can't afford to pay anything extra when they can't even afford to buy food and, and do gas and pay their bills right now. And we need you guys to stand up for us. You know, you were elected to speak up for us. It's not, we cannot stop change, we cannot stop progress. That's not, we're saying, we don't know enough about this. Like the gentleman said, can we slow it down a little bit and see what happens? Because, you know, the prayer was beautiful, and I'm sure everybody is pretty much faith-based here, but in Genesis, Satan started as a serpent. When you get to Revelation, it's a whole dragon. How much do we need? How much do we have to feed into this? How much of the consumption do we need? How much power do we need? How much do we need? And it's just, it's, it's so much going on, and we, you know, the tech companies and with Amazon and all of them, are they gonna pay into the building, the, the lights, the water consumption? Like they say, you can't, you can't get that water back. Are they gonna pay their fair shares, they're gonna be on the citizens? And we just wanna know, because we don't know, this thing is so new to us, and we're just trying to figure out what's going on. And it's just, that's pretty much what I have to say, but we just want you all to listen to us. And it's not about, you know, we, we see the money, the money piece, the money piece is gonna bring jobs, it's gonna bring all these great things, but that doesn't matter. We move out in this area for a particular reason, for our families. Sometimes we gotta let that money thing go. We gotta let it go, because we got people, we got lives at stake, and which is more important.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Susan Warren, 5129 North Tubman, Aplin. And I'd like to expand a little bit on what Will said about generators. He said that the generators wouldn't exceed seventy decibels, but everything I've read states that generators can run between ninety and a hundred decibels when they're running. Now, is everything that's out there about this a lie? Or have y'all not really read any of this material? Okay. The other thing about sound is that what Marlena was talking about, about how it can harm people and things. The seventy-decibel hum, and that's the one that goes twenty-four-seven, seven days a week, and it can be heard up to a half a mile away and create sleep disturbance and anxiety. And a steady fifty-two decibel can cause birds to leave their nests, insects to stop mating calls, and mammals to show signs of stress and avoid their natural habitats. I already see that now with the animals that, that used to be around here that are no longer here because... that are no longer here because there's so much noise and construction. So that concerns me. Another thing that concerns me is the two-acre. You say those should be two, minimum two acres. Then you say lots used for utility facilities such as substations, lift stations, and similar may reduce the size of the lot as approved by the Planning Services Division Director or they're designated during the site plan review process. Where adjacent to other property zone DC, the side and rear setbacks may be reduced to three feet along those shared property lines. If a buffer is larger than a property setback, the buffer shall take precedence. So you're saying that if land purchased right next to a data center lot for this could be less than two acres, and the setbacks could be reduced to three feet with the data center lot? You know, two acres, actually, I looked it up. If it's squared, it's two-hundred-and-eighteen feet by two-hundred-and-eighteen feet. Or if you go length times width, it's a hundred-and-thirty-two feet by thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet. So if I'm figuring what's happening here, you're saying that someone's home could conceivably be a hundred-and-thirty-two feet plus the setback from the data center? And you know what? The county forced me to buy two and a half acres to build my eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot home. What the heck? You know, two acres, and I had to buy two and a half acres to put eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot house on it? That's not right. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Blaine Carter, I live at 861 Deerwood Circle. So just make sure I understand what's happening here. This is just to reword the existing ordinances and some changes to that?
What we're doing, what we're doing, we're creating a data center district, ninety-dash-one-oh-one DC data center district ordinance.
Right, and so Mr. Will here just said all of the parameters about that. So my question is, who's going to enforce what you propose? So say they failed the sound test before getting a CO. Who's going to enforce that? So these people are going to, I'm sorry for buttoning in. These people are going to come in, they're going to spend many millions of dollars building this facility, and sound is going to disallow them to move in?
Yeah.
I disagree. I disagree because on Evans-Tollock Road, a house was built, walls were built around that house. A gate was put up in front with a sign that said he had permission to do so. But the zoning and all of the variances and all the requirements to build a fence on the front, all that, they disregarded that. Came before the commission. The commission said they had to tear the walls down, right? A couple of weeks after that meeting where everybody was all up in arms, the neighbors, the walls are still there. Nothing's been torn down. They simply told him he couldn't close his gates, right?
You're referring to Mr. Patel.
I don't know the guy's name.
That is still in a court case.
Well, I get it. But he's got, here's my point. My point is simple. All of these zoning things are being put in place currently so that the county can have a data center that the commission says there is no data center yet. That they're going to do all these things. They give us a list of things they're going to do. And they have no right to enforce those or even implement the tax amendment that they claim because I've asked them about it. And so, because that's done on a state level, not a county level. And so I guess I'm just trying to figure out who in the county is going to tell a multimillion-dollar investor that's already built a building with a property that y'all are going to say they can have a daycare, but the end result's only going to have about twenty people working there? Who's going to need a daycare? And so that means that they can subdivide the property and sell these lots that are closer to these people's homes and build things based on these new zoning amendments. And so it just seems to me that these are kind of bogus. And so I just, I'm concerned that if you guys pass this tonight and approve it, that this will open the door for more people getting all up in arms over the fact that we're not being told the truth. And it's our tax dollars that bought the land in the first place. The pollards own the land. Another guy buys the land for nine million dollars. Within a year, within one year, the Columbia County Development Authority paid twenty-eight approximate million dollars for that land with no improvements. That's our money. They borrowed the money from Queensborough and another bank. So our tax dollars are footing the bill for something that is proposed, that is coming apparently. And this is all just the groundwork to make it happen. And it's just not enforceable from my perspective. Because if you can't stop a guy on Evans-Tollock Road from building walls and putting his property over onto the Westlake Golf Course, he exceeded his property line. I think the home is beautiful on the back. I'm not, it's not my style, but I could say, yeah, I could appreciate the property. But this has taken two thousand acres. It's not a lot on the golf course. Thank you.
Jonathan Migg, it's 1357 Warson Drive, Evans, Georgia. I'll just be a quick minute. I just took some notes during what we were talking. But I think this is a great opportunity for a strategic pause for the county. Real quick on the noise level, you could look at my VA rating if you want to. Seventy continuous decibels will wreak havoc on you. I did have a question for Will on the height. It was a seventy-five-foot height with what we're talking about tonight. You mentioned cell towers. Is potential could go on these lots, is that your statement?
So it would still be a conditional use. So yeah, a cell tower, just like any property, could have a, probably have a cell tower.
Now, those heights would not be the seventy-five. That'd be a totally different ordinance, right? So to offset their costs for what they're paying, they could lease land to Verizon or AT&amp;T for cell towers.
They're the same as anybody who owns property.
Okay, no, that's fine. We haven't talked about it, so I just want to make sure I understood. And two acres is for a computer room, not a data center. That's way too small. I've been doing data centers for thirty years, and that's ridiculous. Does this ordinance for either White Oak or Future deal with the water? The closed-loop system I'm talking about? It doesn't mention that at all, right?
Not anything on how they cool.
Okay, it's just land only, right? Okay, so I'll table that for the next time. And like I said on Tuesday, you know, this is a great time. Take a pause and don't let revenue cloud our judgment here. We have time. Time's on our side. Don't rush it. We're not ready for this. We're just not. Northern Virginia has been doing this since 2008, and they're still not ready for it. They screwed it up. Let's get it right. If we're going to do it, let's get it right. That's all I'm saying. Take your time. Don't rush it. Thank you.
Hello. Deanna Coleman, 6821 Pecan Road, Aplin. I wear hearing aid. And at ninety decibels, it says I can cause definite trauma after thirty minutes to my hearing. And at seventy decibels, let's just say constantly, I'm sure that with you extracting and everything, it can definitely cause more damage to my hearing than I already have. Plus, I want to mention my autistic daughter, who could probably hear the buzzing in those lights. What do you think that's going to do to her? That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Sylvia Elam in Oak Road. I am too going to address the decibel amount. I'm a beekeeper. And seventy decibels can really wreak havoc on my hives. Sixty can stress them out. So it's not easy being a beekeeper because you have mites and you have all this other stuff that can attack them and other bees and ants and a ton of stuff. And to have the bees die and just become disoriented, not be able to brood, not be able to do anything affecting in that area. It's a rural area. People have gardens, people have farms, and they need the bees. So please, as a beekeeper, consider lowering that decibel to keep our bees alive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tori Knox, 5496 White Oak Road. So I got a few notes here. So on section ninety-ninety-seven, Will pointed out page five? Yeah, page five, data centers and research development. Just wanted to also draw your attention to page two. So on page two, all major utilities except for, as listed below, telecommunication tower and all minor utilities. There was, this is marked for major utilities will be allowed to use. Unlike all other major utilities are under conditional use. So I don't know what the thought was behind that decision. But this does limit the review or approval by the board that represents the citizens. Just wanted to point that out. Any comments on the decision behind that?
Yeah. So a substation is a major utility, for instance. They're going to likely have those on a site, so that's why it's allowed to use. Now, substations are in further discussed in Ninety-Sixteen-Forty-Seven requiring buffering, et cetera. That was why that was made. Allowed for those sorts of things to occur on hopefully larger projects.
I also wanted to talk on here ninety-one-forty-seven. This is in regards to the generators. It states in section B, except for generator testing, maintenance, or commission. I think this has been slightly revised. Generator is limited to backup and emergency use only. Is that emergency use just for the data center? Or would that also be to feedback the grid?
We haven't specified. I mean, I would say it would be for emergency. So again, emergency use implies for the data center. But it's not specified. I'll say that.
Okay. I think it's worth specifying if that is the intent. I'm against the reduction on the buffer. I mean, five-hundred-foot, three-hundred-foot's a football field, right? Five-hundred-foot's a little bit more than a football field. You're going shorter. Not very good. But I do like the, you know, restriction on visibility. So anywhere on the hill in the back of our property, which is adjacent to this property, would be out of line of sight of the buildings. Is that correct?
Oh, yes. But again, I will always say to people whenever that question is asked, there is likely going to be somewhere I can stand to see something, even if you try to hide it. So I'm not going to tell you it's going to be entirely invisible. That is, the intent is for it to be not noticeable to you.
And it says here for, I guess it's for substations. The substations will not be visible from our property. That's correct?
That is the intent.
And, so how does this buffer apply for when there's an easement? Say there's just that road right there. Does this apply to that buffer too? Or will they be using that as an access road and lighting it up? I know this is, that's more specific.
That's a very specific and context question. I mean, it's one that's kind of going to depend. I can't say, yeah, it's going to be lit up or used or anything like that. I mean, it does allow you to have access through the buffer essentially. It's one that you could have access through a buffer. But the intent is not to have a whole fifty-feet-wide that's part of the buffer, but not. That is not what we want to see with that.
Thank you for the clarity. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michael Harrison, five-eight-one-five, or five-eight-one-eight Whispering Pines Way. I'm relatively new to the area. We moved here within the last year. A lot of passionate people here, very deeply invested in our community, and it really moves me to see it. I'm an engineer by trade or by training. I just had a couple more technical questions to see if they've been thought out and concerned with this. You're raising the height of these buildings permitted to seventy-five feet without them needing to get any additional approval for that much higher than normally allowed. And then you're saying that you can reduce the setback because you're putting a berm in place or a barrier. Have you accounted for that extra height and how much that extra height could make that propagate?
Yes.
And then the other question I have, a lot of concerns about noise pollution. What would be the decibel limiting if somebody was to be putting a daycare next to another industrial site or an industrial site next to a daycare? You're here having one in the middle of it.
Sure. So as far as I know, we don't have a, there's nothing in our code that says here's what the decibel limit is for that kind of use. This is the first time we put it in there.
Okay. Seems to be a pretty big concern. And like, consider what you'd do for a school or anywhere else with that. That's going to be a major issue.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Aller. I live at six-eight-four-nine Pecan Road. I was not prepared to speak. Going to try and stay focused. I want to clarify that this project, know for a fact because I've done some research, was started in early 2024 under the project name of Green Jacket, all under NDAs. For two years, this county had the opportunity to try and put together this new ordinance. And you wait till after Trammell Crowe has signed this contract for two thousand acres to come up with an ordinance that is for future data centers. Correct me if I'm wrong. This ordinance that you're proposing modifications to is only for future data centers and will not be for the Trammell Crowe. That's what I'm reading? Yes, no?
That's correct. Yeah.
That is correct. So Trammell Crowe is going to be able to build this under the S-1, not under these new guidelines.
They so choose.
So that's what I wanted to get clear because everybody needs to know. We're worried about the decibels. We're worried about this. It does not apply to the two thousand acres. This is where the county did not do its due diligence. It did not look out for its citizens. And time and time again, when we've asked, please stop, please don't do this, the response has been, well, we might get sued or we might lose some money. That's a crying shame. You never allowed the citizens who pay these taxes to have any voice in this. And now you're coming back and say, oh, well, we kind of screwed up. We need to have an ordinance for future data centers. That's a crying shame. And not just you guys, the commissioners, EDAT, everybody. Shame on them. Shame on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do what now?
Any other member of the, is it?
We, this came to us, what, May? We found out about anything with the data center, which none of this has anything to do with, but yeah.
What was the question? You have a question?
I have no question.
My name is David Daniel. I live on sixty-one sixty-six, Seven and Route. Gentlemen, I grew up listening to all what you do. Our father was a county treasurer in Richmond County. Well, I listened to this all my whole life, reason I never went into it. And this embarrassed, the fact that you've embarrassed these people out here is beyond me. That you've done all this without one, their approval and their consent. This is going to have major conflict to their property values. When you start having noise pollution, light pollution, heaven forbid they get any of those chemicals in the ground, just like our neighbors, you know, we sold our soul to the devil eighty years ago. Why we have cancer going out of sight in this community? You know? I mean, and we all know that now. We, we know what we did eighty years ago and they're digging it up and putting, melting it down and putting it in glass boxes and shipping it to Arizona as fast as they can get it there. We know what we did. We did it for the good of the country. But now we're paying the price for it when they find plutonium three twenty-three down there in a well in Burke County. So I know all about that, but it really broke my heart that you, that, that y'all weren't more forthcoming. I, I, I just don't understand that. Now, everybody talks about Richmond County, the worst leadership in Georgia, all them so and so's over there. They're terrible. I mean, I ju, I don't understand it. Y'all are highly educated people. You'd be of great character. I ju, I just don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is, uh, sorry. My name is Aaron Bilyeu, uh, seven twelve Main Street, Suite three hundred, Houston, Texas, uh, seven seven zero. I am here actually in support of the zoning amendment proposed. Uh, I will state for the record that I've had zero involvement in the White Oak Business Park, um, uh, project to date and don't intend to have any product, um, involvement with that going forward. Uh, I do work for a firm that develops, uh, data centers. And so we are only interested in zoning amendment as it relates to going forward. I've developed data centers in over forty countries and I think what you're putting forward and the way you're approaching this, again, going forward, um, really kind of represents the best practices in terms of putting zoning in place to be able to regulate that everybody's on a level playing field as, um, additional parcels and properties are considered, uh, for future looking data centers. Data centers do represent a significant, uh, economic development opportunity for the county. Uh, there are a lot of negative perceptions of data centers and those are all rooted in truth, right? The, uh, water consumption that historically has been a problem, um, that is a reality in any community. Noise concerns, um, those are largely born out of Northern Virginia where data centers are pressed right up against residential neighborhoods. Um, I think the, the citizens expressing their concerns over a lot of those things, um, they're, they're, they're right to do so. And I think your, what you're proposing here, um, really is, um, addressing, uh, a lot of those concerns. Uh, modern data centers, um, are being designed and, um, are being built to a different standard than what has historically been done as technology have come up. So I think that, um, through outreach and communication with the community and through the modern designs, I think a lot of the citizens' concerns really will be mitigated, um, over time. Uh, it will take a lot of work and it will take a lot of, uh, community outreach and partnering and understanding. Uh, personally at, um, Cloverleaf, uh, which is a company I work for, um, there are a couple of things that we do differently in our data centers that I think align with some of the community's goals. Uh, we do advocate for closed loop systems, not utilizing any cooling for water. Uh, we really only use cooling, uh, water in our data centers for bathrooms and toilets and showers. So our water consumption is more similar to, um, you know, small office buildings because that's kind of what, kind of what really there is, you know, with a few hundred employees at the facilities. Uh, we all also are fans of the dark sky limitations. One of the citizens referenced those and we are, we are big fans of those. So, um, if we elect to move forward with, um, you know, coming to this board and then ultimately to the commission for data centers, those will be the types of things that we will, um, be committing to projects that we bring forward. Again, I believe all data centers moving forward should be under the standards that, um, that are being implemented here. Um, there are some specific components that are challenging. I don't agree with everything that's in them. Um, and I know I, I agree with the, uh, some of the, the comments have been made. Um, a five hundred foot setback is a, is a fairly large setback, so I think we'll agree to disagree, but I, well, you know, I think we can, we can get there on something that is workable for modern and future data centers, um, going forward. But overall, um, you know, we support, um, the, uh, addition of the zoning to the code and promote the, uh, responsible, um, development of data centers going forward. And I look forward to working with, uh, with this board and ultimately the county board on any future proposed, uh, projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
My name is Amy Cut, care y'all. Well, I'm Amy. I told him I wouldn't introduce myself. I didn't come here for the data center tonight. I came for something that else that y'all had actually denied and I feel like I've kind of been a neutral party. People have asked me if I care about the data center or not and honestly, I've just kind of been like, it doesn't matter is either yes or no, it doesn't really matter to me. But sitting here tonight without an opinion and not planning to speak when I probably should have been speaking on what you denied for me, but I didn't. And when I get up here and I listen to all of these people complaining and all of these people have true legitimate concerns, that I do hope that each one of you do reconsider and consider what the citizens of Columbia County are desiring. And so I don't really, so I didn't come to say, yes, I want this or no, I don't, but I have a room full of people behind me that they're not happy with this. And I hope each one of you consider what these people behind us have said tonight. There's been one person that came up and said that they are for things and they're from Texas and they're, work at a firm. So anyways, I didn't feel like I had a dog, like really had a bone in the fight, whatever they say, but I just couldn't just sit there and think, these are the people of Columbia County and this is what they are desiring. These are true concerns. I live in Abling and maybe I should have reconsidered and really thought what's coming to my, to my area a little bit more and I regret that I haven't been more educated. And so I just say that you need to consider what these people are saying tonight and not just pass something because maybe it puts more money in pockets here or there, or maybe it's a different agenda that I have no idea. But I just hope that whatever it is, that their voices, our voices are heard because that's why you sit there.
Thank you. Okay. I think we were, uh, finished with the public participation part of this. Do we have any, um, comments? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file TA two five eleven oh one ordinance established in the DC data center district with changes in regard generators.
Second. I got a, a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We have no legal matters tonight. I do not see attorney driver, any, uh, staff or commissioner comments to make?
Comments?
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.